Welcome back to the channel everybody. That's, oh, that's the wrong thingy. There you go. Wait, where is it? There you go. My name is NutRaisen. Let's do some more PLO study. Welcome back to a no delay stream. Get all of that out of the way. So, haven't quite decided what to look into yet. I'm still looking forward to having post flop stuff, but we are not there just yet. So, a little bit more of pre flop stuff then. Um. One suggestion yesterday was smart blind versus big blind. I guess first we could look at like what hands to open smart blind against big blind, although that's probably a pretty decent amount. And then we can, more interestingly, it's probably gonna be to check out defending ranges. But let's start with opening ranges and concentrate on like the weakest hands. And which ones are still raised folds? Maybe it would be interesting. Okay, so I solved the problem of the, I'll show you, I'll talk about it in a minute. Right, so. That one we already have, raise smart blind. Oh, actually, it would be raised first in smart blind. Okay, let's load that from the mastermind cloud. Would be PLO 500, uh, 50, although what DeBoris said yesterday, using higher stakes ranges might be a thing. We'll go with PLO 50 once more for today. So everybody folds. Small blind raises. Oh, actually, go back one. Can we, can we go back? Oh yeah, that's how it works. Cool. So that would be the race first in. Download that real quick. Just the name, now imported, race first, uh, first in small blind, PLO 50. 100 BB, there we go. So smart blind race part. And villain range, I guess, would be the one for calling big blind. I think we need to download that one as well. So that would be smart and raise, big blind. Because we still go with the race first in, in the beginning, so once I download more stuff, it'll all be nice in an order here in the list. So that would be small and versus big blind. Glory man. Well, I'm picking an easy one for beginners, uh, for the beginning today. Good to see you back Glory and Fur. Nice to see you guys. Um. Hang on, I need to think, what do we, which one, do we need this villain range here? No, we don't at this point, I believe. So we just go with, uh, for starters for like 10, 15 minutes, uh, what hands we would raise and pick the weakest ones, right? Right. So first one would be, wait, that's the wrong one. Be small and fault. And 50, oh yeah, because um, maybe, I don't know if we need this one at all. If we do, yeah, we probably don't. We'll see if that works. If not, then we'll just load all the hands up here. As you can see, I'm still figuring out stuff. So first one would be fold. Call, I mean, I, maybe there's just a calling range, a limping range. Yeah, there probably is. Never mind. There definitely is. We were saying put 100% range in the initial. Alright, let's see if that changes things. Let me just add the last one here. Oh, or I guess we'll call this one limp. Just a little bit more informative, I guess. And parted, of course. And then we use the buckets. Yeah, I guess I don't. It looks, it looks alright. Right, so, uh, if you remember yesterday in these columns here, there were things that were just dot dots. There still are, however. The only card that gets started is the queen now. I could fix it. It has to do with window scaling and the developer will eventually fixes in the tools, but if you don't use window scaling, you don't, won't run into this problem at all. But just so you know, uh, the dots are queens. And everything else should be displayed, right? Yeah, I think I checked before the session and only the queens. Fair enough, cool. So buckets, let's choose buckets. I mean, the obvious hands we don't need to look into, right? Rainbow Aces, Broadway pairs, double suited middle O pairs, all pretty much no brainer. Let's go with single suited and rainbow pairs. That might be interesting. I will just, we'll just add them. Run down, single suited for the rainbow ones, maybe. Can we, do we have just rainbow? Oh yeah, we do. Let's not use these. Because the single suited rundowns, I would say most, if not all of them, you're terrible at the spot. Yeah, I'm not that great either in the blinds. It's a spot I never really looked into, so I kinda dig doing this now. Double suited dragon, I guess we can go with these. Single suited dragon. Double pair, double pair. Single suited rainbow, double pairs, maybe. Unpaired, double suited. Raise the limb range as well. Still we have unpaired, single suited rundowns. Let's just pick the very weakest of the hands, I would say, right? Like if something catches your eye here that you would like to see included in, in the buckets. Add rainbow ace high. Richie Wa, popping into lurk. Good to see you Richie. Rainbow connecting, yeah, Broadway. A lot of the rainbow stuff is probably interesting. It's a wide array of hands, but we can further filter them down later on by just picking the weakest or the, uh, spots with the least, with the, like, least EV. Pirate you up. Rundowns. Okay, let's go with these. Maybe, oh, that's down here, it filters some, uh, I think we have these included up there already. Just a further differentiation of some spots. Let's go with that, that's plenty of hands. Minimans for life. Do you even study, bro? Well, not yet, right now we're setting it up. So add the buckets to the filter. I believe it already did, yeah, there we go. NutRaisen study don't mix. I am here to prove you wrong. Alright, begin this, let me just the study spot here. There you go. Cool. So. We could lower the EV later on, but let's go with this for starters. Ace queen, seven deuce. Say it's a race, for sure. Suited aces, the seven deuce ain't great, but you know, we are up against a wide open range. Set this up wrong. Hang on. Just making sure here, let's check out the matrix. It's a professional streamer would have loaded up already. Yeah, I'll allow some more time for the, for the next one. That one was pretty quick. For you to get your answers in. Seven deuce, yeah, the deuce, I know, the deuce is, uh, really bad, I, I agree. So the matrix still, well, actually it limps that, but as you can see here, the EV difference is exactly the, the, the expected values, expect, exactly the same, so you might as well, uh, fold it. It saves itself trouble, I guess. So for the record, the matrix would limp this, which as you can see here. Same expected value there. And it will count as a race, fair enough. Um, yeah, might as well save yourself the, the trouble playing out of position. Alright. 10, 9, 6, 4 should be no brainer. Man, that's a pretty strong hand, man. How come we have this one in here? Would be unpaired, double suited, disconnected. I guess that counts. Yeah, raise, right? Pot even, yeah. Yeah, I should have, I don't know why, uh, I named it pot this time. Can I still? Uh, it keeps the, it keeps the button name, I think. Maybe it loads it up for the next one. Alright, parted here. Limping sometimes, interestingly enough. It's not 100% strategy. Okay. King 7, 3. So, I mean, I have a slight advantage since I just saw the matrix, so I'm waiting, uh, what you guys would do. But I mean, that's the whole point as well. Learn stuff. Fold, the gloryman would say. I think it's a little bit stronger and I, I'll wait. Dorman Fur saying raise. So if I saw it right in the matrix, then would be a limp. Hmm, that's sometimes be a limp. But more often apart, but again, here the expectation is pretty similar. However, uh, this time you block a king, which is nice. Punja, hey, welcome back. You made it to the study stream. Very marginal, yeah, so the EV is exactly the same here in Solvland. Alright. Check 6, 3, deuce. For 30 German time. I was a couple, I wasn't very German about it, I was a couple of minutes late. I, yeah, that's such a tiny bit stronger, but we do block kings, I, I guess, um. Yeah, that's probably it. Fold to say, yeah, I'd say so to any other opinions. Do let me know, I'll, I'll try to speed it up a little, uh, some comments yesterday where that, uh, took a long time, which is fair enough. It, it did. So let me know if I'm not allowing enough time for you guys. I think once we get the chat integration this week, next week, I'll set the timer to like 20 seconds of a brief. Fold, fold is okay. 10, 8 for deuce. Okay, I know what we do, what we'll do next. So, I would say part, any other opinions? I would part it and well. Because maybe it's a limp. It's probably a mixed strategy again, huh? Isn't blowing your mind. Yeah, I mean, you're playing high stakes, but for me, it was very interesting. Also trying to figure, so what would you say, Punja, is the reasoning behind it? Do you, uh, agree with what I said, that it's strong enough to see a flop multibay? So fold, double suited trash, it is kind of double suited trash, I already put it like that. I'm gonna stick to my guns and say limp, but in sometimes raise. But I'm starting to feel that I'm gonna be wrong here. Yeah, double suited trash. Describes it neatly. 9, 4, 3 deuce. Oh, it is blowing your mind. Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, I'm, no worries. I'm curious, what, what would you think is the reasoning for that? Like that interesting spot we had yesterday that Punja described with the Ace check 10, 4 versus the ace king queen 10. You sure do, my friend. I'm glad you have a job and you don't, you know, play all day. I don't have to compete against you. No clue, huh? Yeah, fair enough. I mean, that's the only reasoning I could come up with. Yeah, so fold is okay, 100%. Limp not that much more minus EV, apparently. 10, 7, 4, 3. Well, if you folded it 10, 8, 4, 3. This is probably a no brainer as well, right? Probably just gonna be a fold. I know, that doesn't change anything. What, fold, Dorman says. All is completely okay. 10, 8 for deuce, uh, same hand. Even, well, way worse, in fact, so, uh, for these, I, I think, like, do let me know how you would prefer me to do this, but for the obvious ones that are similar to one we just had, I'd just go ahead and not wait for answers, I'd say, speed it up a little. But do let me know if you concur or if you would like to get your votes in, no matter what. Fold, right. S 10, 7, 4. And by the way, I think next up, we'll, uh, check out what we do if we get raised from the smart, from the big blind. Take a look at what I limp generally. Not really, I, I'm sure I glanced over it here and there and I observed some of it um, when watching, uh, let's plays, like playing explains in the mastermind, but other than that, I, I never really studied blind versus blind spots, very, very briefly and basically none concerning limping ranges. Parted, yeah, I'd say so too. That's okay, sometimes still gets limped. And the expectation here is, uh, quite the same. However, I'd say we, uh, should, we would be calling a raise here, I would assume. But let's get back, get back to that later. Ace queen, 5 deuce. Should be, well. Isn't that easy? We had a very similar hand earlier, didn't we? In my mind, I was smashing a certain button. Now seeing what we just had earlier. Not so sure. Fuck the limb range, pot. Logan partying it up, no matter what. We had double suited, the other one we took, we took a look at was single suited, right? Yeah, 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 pot, 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 pot. I agree. Pot myself, just in time. Yes, and no two ways about it. Again, the EV difference not huge, interestingly enough. 10, 9, 6, well, now here I would be interested if this is a race, race. I think the answer to, uh, which button to mash here is pretty clear. I got a hint in the matrix. Yeah, and it was single suited, ace queen, right, less connectivity, that's true. We didn't have the two ways to make a wheel. Or even one more straight. So parted here for sure. And that would indeed be a raise, raise. I'll show the matrix for that one real quick. So specifically down to the 9, 6, like the red ones, let me know if you have any questions about the, uh, legend here, about the, what the colors mean. You can probably, yeah, you can see it down here as well. So the ones with the best connectivity gets, get raised, raised, raise, re-raised. Yeah, okay. Here, I'm not waiting for answers, I'd say. I'm curious to see if there's sometimes a limp with this one. Actually, you know what, there might be. Hang on, my phone. Sorry about that. Alright, so, uh, parting, I mean, is the obvious one, but I guess with the 10 and the suit, we pretty much always will part it, right? Because I could see some limping here, like limp raising. See, does the matrix sometimes limp raise that one? No. No, the matrix just mashes the race button no matter what the side cards are. Only one that doesn't play is, uh, triple ace, ace. Quad, uh, quad aces, basically. Let's check out the rainbow ones in the matrix, I'd be curious. So even the rainbow, uh, triple ace is king, triple ace deuce. Double ace, 3 deuce, rainbow just gets parted. Inject 9, 5. Also kind of interesting. Um, we can, we are able to load multiple instances here, I'm just trying to figure out some, nah, never mind. We're thinking maybe we can directly, uh, check it out in a bucket tool, what we would do against a three bet, uh, party by setting up a set, setting up another simulation, but a situation for that and opening a second instance, but I'll, I'll play around with that off stream and see if there's a way, viable way to do it really quickly, like copy paste the handover. Okay. So what do you guys say? Inject 9 seems to be pretty strong, the 9, 5 has some vague connectivity as well. I'd go with pot. Yeah. Again, difference in EV. Break even spot. You know, in Solvland, of course. I think in reality we do get a bunch of folds, for sure. 7, 5, 4, 3. Also curious one. When I'd say it gets, it gets played for sure, right? It's a good race. Oh man, saying pot, pot, pot. No. What's the matrix opinion on that? I guess it isn't, it is worthwhile to check this out, because I would have I think I would have parted this too. I mean, I click pot here, but I'm just trying to think like at the table, so I'm pretty certain I would just pop, 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 parted. Yeah, matter of fact, there's no 7, 5, uh, single suited that gets played. Well, that, well, actually, if this one doesn't get played and another gets, uh, played, because this is the best 7, 5. We could counter, but even like better suited to the 7, nope. Alright. Ace king 9, 3. Probably different than the ace queen, 7 deuce we had earlier, but I'll give, I'll wait a moment here with this one. Yeah, OMG, indeed, Glory. I agree. Parting it here to Gloryman, yeah, I think so too. 96% of the time, yep, so. You know, if it's 80, it's, if, if it's like 85, 90% plus, I'd say just go with 100% and don't bother figuring it out like a mixed strategy with the, with hands like these. Ace king 6, 3. I'd say same story. Now the two side cards are connected to each other, before it was the king and the 9 being connected to each other as well. Um, we still block kings, block aces, have an ace high suit. Unlocker 1, welcome to the channel mate. Right, right, it says DFS God in progress, welcome to the channel mate. It says right here on the screen, hopefully, and it is indeed confirmed smart blind race first in with weak hands. And next up, we'll check out what we do against three bets. Pot, unlocker. Tonight, uh, today, um, just yet, you don't need the exclamation, uh, point, but it'll come in handy soon. Right, parting at 80%. Interestingly, gets limped sometimes as well, so might be something to take note of. And the EV is essentially, is the same. And the EV is essentially, is the same. Between limping and parting. No, I play, my main game is PLO20 right now. I do play PLO10 if there's nothing else running, but I prefer to play on run at once, and if I don't get enough action there, my second side currently is, for the most part, Microgaming. 10-7-6-3, unlocker says fold. He had a very similar hand earlier, I tried to remember if that was suited to the ace or not. Some story name. Mine? Oh, on party? No, I'm not raising on party. A party poker, sorry, 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 yeah, yeah, fast fold on party poker. When I see PP, I always think, uh... What are they, like the PP poker clubs, whatever it's called? So we have a vote for fold? No, no, that's me. Luckily, when they changed, when everybody had to change their screen name, I could, uh... Go with not raising there. You have the top two at the bottom. I liked the extra reasoning there, so you convinced me. Yeah? Right, you know, without the, what Unlocker said there, Gloriman, I would have smashed the part button as well. So something to note, two gaps at the top and another two gaps at the bottom. So four gaps in total, maybe that's like a generalization that will hold true. Four gaps in total? We'll see. Ace queen 8-3. Also an interesting one. For the record, we are only checking out weekends today.
Raven, welcome back, thank you very much for the 11-month resub. Thank you very much, Raven. Very nice of you. Gloriman says fold, I'm tending to agree.
You don't know what a limp... What a limp is, I think you mean what a limp is on smart line, or is it an abbreviation, I'm not familiar with. I'm... Yeah, I think I could see the fold. Yep. Folding and limping, you know, in Solvland again, same equity here, but you just save yourself the hassle of playing a tiny part out of position. Which is never nice. 9-7-5, uh, no, sorry. 9-5-4-deuce, so again, in total, four blockers, but... More worryingly, three gaps between the 9 and the 5 here. But on the other hand, we are double-suited. Not even thinking about the 4% limp, oh, hell no. That's too much, there's so much shit to learn in PLO. I think we could do without the 4%ers. Just like with the 1%ers in real life, could do without those as well. Fold, Unlocker says. Raven, yes, it is, smart line race first in with weekends for now. And I added the description of the spot here in the overlay down there. Um... DFS God says part 4-bet, check out the 4-bet part in the matrix. Ah, that seems a tall order, part 4-bet. Like make the deuce anything between a 9 and a 6, I think it sounds good. Part is race first in, yeah, next time, I'll just call it race first in, not just race. Welcome to the second-ever study stream, Raven. No delay. Um, so what's, we have folds, we have parts, it's pretty evenly divided. I personally, I go with the part, click that button, the folds have it. But since you suggested part and 4-bet, let's check out a slightly stronger hand, smart line race first in. Let's check out the 9-6-5-4, maybe, double-suited. Really? Does not get played, did you see that? Well, yeah, in the right category. So one pip stronger, 9-7-6-5 gets raised call, okay? The 9, let's go for the perfect one, 9-8-7-6, only a raise call. We got a 4% nerd. Oh... Gloriman bullying peeps, huh? Where is a limp? Yeah, I... You know, folding would be the last button I would have clicked personally here. Well, I think we could go past this one really quickly. Do let me know, like give me feedback if I'm taking too long for spots, if the easy ones like this, I should just click away. It's, you know, I haven't done this often yet. Unlocker, I dig that you put additional thoughts out there, saying, uh, there's a weak 9 with... Yeah, you know, if you put it like that, we have a 9 with a 2-4-5, yeah. I mean, yeah, just reading it like that, it sounds way more like a fold. Fold here, no-brainer. 7-6-4-3, rainbow. Hmm, I'm gonna wait for this one. I don't know how long the delay, how long it takes you guys to see what's happening on screen, I think like 4-5 seconds, or I believe the fold's coming in right now from Unlocker and Raven. Oh yeah, they're all for this hand and... What are they saying, fold, yeah, okay. So even the way better connectivity here, well, we just checked out the... What was it, 9-6 hand, double-suited, if that one is a fold, then this one would be fold always. Queen 10-8-5. Let's check single-suited, yeah, good call. Was it 7-6-5-4, right? Or something of the ilk? No? Does not get played. 7-6-4-3, yeah, okay, thanks. Okay, so the delay is, so it happens really quickly, it's like 4-5 seconds, huh? Cool. Um, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh. I mean, I'm streaming in no delay, but Twitch and the whole broadcasting thing adds a little bit. Fold, Gloriman says. Yeah, I'm starting to come, yeah. I was trying to think if I, like at runtime, what I would have done in the past, and I probably would have parted it sometimes. Go with the limp, go with the fold, and that's exactly correct. Jack 7-6 deuce, should be pretty easy, well, I'll wait like 10 seconds. But, let's see, fold, 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 yeah. If you guys don't want to type the whole word every time, you can just put F, just put the first letter in there. Don't make it easier on yourself. 10-7-3 deuce, well, if the other one was a fold, then this is a fold as well. What do you mean Twitch rules? Ace queen 9-5? Yeah, that was still for the last one, Gloriman, I believe. Yeah, the really obvious ones that are similar to the hands we just had, I'd just skip, or, you know, click really quickly. Oh, I see. Can send the same message every... You guys fold this. It's really similar to a hand we had earlier, huh? I'm gonna go, I'm gonna stick to my guns initially, I would have thought, parted just because, you know, cut too nice, blinded by a suited ace queen. But I'm starting to feel you're right. No! Okay, let's see, well, we have three, we have two high cards, the 9 isn't all that bad. Um, yeah, suited to the ace. Not that horrible connectivity, actually, most cards can do something with each other, the ace 5 makes a straight, 9-5, queen 9 makes a straight. The one that doesn't is the queen and the 5. So parting it here, Kikazi joining us as well, good to see you, mate. Jack 10-9-7. Triple-suited. Uh, I wanted to say, is it better to open, yeah, but it was part. Yeah, I'll rename the thing for the next spot. I'd say like do like another 5 or 10 minutes. Yeah, the 9-5 connectivity and the queen 9 connectivity, I think, just about does it there. So here, well, I'm going with the part, what are you guys doing? Oh, right, I should add that to the, thank you for asking that, Kikazi. It is PLO50 right now, it's assuming... PLO50 rig. Thank you. Forgot about that. There you go. Raise, Kikazi says rig. Um, yeah, I'd say so. Gloriman, thank you, man. Just quick to snap it over the answers. Parting at 100%. But always interesting to see that in most of these marginal spots here, like the majority has so far, the EV between limping and parting was either the same or very little difference. 10-9-8-3. No. I'd say parted. And also call a raise. That part we'll check out in a moment. I'm going for the mighty P. Single-suited, uh, fold here. Probably, yeah. Unlocker, that would be... Yeah, you will open this hand, well, let's see, I'll open this one too, and I'll call a raise too. Interesting, again, gets limped this one a decent amount, so this is basically a 50-50 mix, right? Like the 60-40, who cares in reality? Unless you're playing against, you know, Venvi. Um, let's check it out, single-suited. Was it 10-9-8, right, 10-9-3? Yeah, single-suited, you can see it right here, only the very best connected hands get played. This one gets raised folded, again, I'd say in practice, it's impossible to keep all that in mind, so just... I would just say go ahead and raise call. I think there are spots where it's way more plus EV to memorize shit than, you know, keeping in mind that one exception to the rule. Um... 9, I would assume it's a raise call. Wait, the matrix doesn't even raise that? Interesting. It's interesting, so the matrix doesn't raise it, let's check the EV again. Minus 5, minus 5. Okay. For the record, in the matrix, we assumed the same rig structure as far as I know. And the only spot so far we had where the matrix didn't play a hand was if the EV was like here, like even across the board. Still raised then regardless of what the server says, yeah. Is it 5-deuce? Ooh, something happened. Gamble Gambly, thank you very much for the follow, very kind. Um... I'd say it's a fold. What do you guys think? A very decided fold by Unlocker there. 3.1 BB race first in rage, hmm. Let me buy a couple of terabytes of RAM and get on solving that. Well, yeah, now I'm clicking buttons in the study software, yeah. Good to see you, mate. Yeah, fold, no-brainer. 10-8 for 3, um, I'm gonna go over this one really quickly, should be a fold after what we've seen so far. Okay. Here, the question isn't what button to press, I'd say, the question is what button do we press if we get 3-bet? Now, I'm trying to figure out what buttons to press a little bit better. There, as you can see... Parted. Parting is obvious, I mean... Didn't mean to sound demeaning, um, in case you were coming up with an answer right now, but I think it should be obvious, it's a really strong hand. Part and call, you guys say. Let's see. Never gets limped. Was it ace-8-5-4? For a look... Yeah, I'd say so too. Part calling. And that's correct, raise-raise would be reserved for the perfect three-card rundown. Alright, maybe I can load this up a little bit, use for reference, so it's easier to see. Thinks it's obvious, you fools. I pity the fool. Check 8-5-4, should be a fold. Um... I guess I still have to open, but I'm not gonna look over to see if there's anything other going on except... Part calling. So what do you guys say? Is that a raise? No, that can't be a raise fold, right? Is it? Looks like a decent forward bluff. This one or the one before? Let's open that and make some money. Well, I'm with you on that score. Does get limped a decent amount of the time. Part call, Raven says. Ace-8-6-3, I think I have to still open. Ace-8-6-3, perfectly suited, check that out. The matrix was raised-fold that one. Very interesting. We'll go, I think we'll do the last, we might actually all do the 50 hands here, why not? And then... We see what we do with these ranges against 3-bet from the big blind. Jack 9-6 deuce, um, here, again, the ones I did, I feel are obvious, I'm just gonna go through a little bit quicker. Um... It's high EV but low frequency play, yep, strange, huh? Pot fold is an interesting line. Yes. So how many gaps do we have? Well, discounting the one between the three cards, we have 8-6, so that's one. And then 5-3, that's another one. Couple of two low cards. Interesting, something to keep in mind, maybe. Slipping is high EV but low frequency play. How does that make sense? I don't know, if you guys can think of a reason? Raven is saying, I think it's a limp, but close. Think you're right, with everything that we've had, that we've seen today, this close. We can ask JNANDers. Yeah, we'll do, we can just, you know what, we can just put a marker on the thingy. So this is a fold, 100%? Actually, I'll take a note real quick, JNANDers. Um, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh, that was the ace-8-6-3, that was suited. Alright. Noted, and I'll ask it in the Discord. Ace 9-8-4, also potentially interesting. 9-7-5-3, I think it's an overrated hand, yeah. Is it an open from the cutoff? I doubt it. Was it 9-7-5-3? No, no, no. I'm certain it's not from the cutoff, and I'm... Yeah, only 9765. And let's see if anything changes if we move over to the button. No. There you have it. Raise. Oh yeah, Punja asking what is RFI. Yeah, raise first in. Gloroman, snappy with the answers. So what do you guys think here? Fold, Gloroman says? Hmm... I'd go with a mixed strategy, sometimes parted, mostly limped, maybe? No, the folds have it. I clicked. Of course I meant that button. King 1096. I guess here the question is if... Well, I'll wait for a moment. Parted, parted, parted. I'm pretty sure the pots have it here, and I just looked it up. Master, if you wanna study, go to punja.com. They, I've heard they have educational content on hubcaps. That's what the site is about, right? It's hubcap porn, you know, like picture porn. And what I looked up is that it is also a race call, but interestingly enough, make it one pip weaker. The king 1095 would be a raised fold. App doesn't look too friendly, but it's awesome. It's a very first release. It's been out for a week, so don't expect eye candy, but functionality-wise, it's neat. Also, nice to see you back at the master. All right, Jack 95-2s. Interesting one here, I'll wait. Yeah, but you're right. It's definitely not a looker at that app right now. Wow, it's a workhorse, man. Yeah, today we are studying pre-flop scenarios, heads up master. We'll need to wait for a couple of days until the software is fully connected to the Mastermind Cloud, and then we will start looking into post-flop stuff, which is what I'm really looking forward to. Unlocker folding. Kikazi saying pot fold. I'm gonna go with the fold as well. And the situation is right here at the bottom of the screen, um... It's Smartline, raise first in with weak hands and assuming PLO50 stars zoom rig. You are, you're right, Fer. You are able to study post-flop already, but you need the soft solutions from Monk server solutions you ran yourself, right? I don't think there's anything coming with it right now, but there will be in a couple of days. Does the supply for life? I couldn't, I can't answer that question. Rositan! Rositan, stick around for a couple of minutes, and that will answer the question. It is the software, you can import your own ranges, and the software is connected to the cloud, and has right now access to a lot of the pre-flop simulations from the Mastermind, and in a couple of days, we'll get post-flop stuff. And then it will be fully connected to the cloud. All the simulations Mastermind ever ran for whatever, we will be able to import and download within the program, really. We'll set up a new spot in a moment, and you'll see. So I'll go with the fold, 100%. So if that one was a fold, this one is a fold for sure. To speed it up a little bit. Queen 954. I'll wait, but I think it's pretty clear at this point. And yeah, I hope that answered both questions, Rositan. Also, nice to see you back, mate. The rich one! What the hell? Dropping a prime sub. Thank you very much, man. That's huge. Appreciate it. Very kind. Cheers. Looking to get into, what do you think about it? I love it, especially, you know, being able to quiz us. Soon it'll be integrated with Twitch, which is this chatbot, I think. The original, that is very, very kind of you. Thank you, mate. Uh, oh yeah. Hang on, I can bring this over. It's low stuff. Like, we didn't change it. We just went with, uh... Here are the buckets. We filtered hands for like weak stuff, like unpaired ragged ace high, single suited rainbow ragged hands, double suited ragged, like really weak stuff. So fold here as well, 100%. Um, to answer the last question, Rositan, yeah, I like it. Well, I dig it already, and I'll positively love it once we can do post-flops things, and I would definitely recommend getting it. And I think you stream too, Rositan, don't you? If you do, you can use it on your stream and have it integrated into the chat, and then, you know, if Gloroman now puts in F for fold, then it will count and it will work in some way, here's to see. King 107-2s might be a little bit more interesting, I don't know. I'm trying to think what I would do in reality, what I would have done in reality up to now and then. It's tough to say, but I think I would get tempted and parted, but it's becoming clear over the last, what, 41 hands we looked into, that maybe that's wrong. So Unlocker going with the fold. Yeah, you know what? Going with the fold as well. If the, what was it, ace queen 7-2s was a fold, and that was suited to the ace, then this one is a fold always. And Rositan, if this is the first look you're taking of the software noted, it also shows you the expected value here. And if for fold, it shows minus 0.5, that's of course because we have the Smartline invested in this point. Check 983. Um... Oh, I'll wait a moment. I must say, this is fun. I'm enjoying these study streams a whole lot. Press F to pay your respect. Never assuming. Then it's just that I've seen your name in a bunch of streams, Rositan. Ed Daphne is kind of plus EV, yeah, yeah, for sure. Note, I'm getting access to the Mastermind for free, so I'm biased, but I would have said the same before that was the case. I used to pay for it in the past. So we have a bunch of folds here. Yeah, with the dangler probably, right? Yeah. Double suited? Is that double suited? Is it double suited trash? I mean, it probably is, right? We're not connected to the high card at all. The cards that are connected have a gap, a huge gap, and are all pretty low. Yeah, the good fault is. Double suited trash, Unlocker says. Yeah, yeah. 9, okay, that has to be a fold. King, Jack, 9-2s. I'll wait a moment, but again, I think there's a certain picture becoming clear here. And even though we only looked at 45 hands now, I have to say, it's starting to help me already. Now remembering all this stuff is a different story. Right. I mean, if, again, if the ace queen 7-2s perfectly single suited to the ace was a fold, stuff like that has to be a fold. This one? He detected 2 spec, any of the other 3. Good point, the rich one. Good point. Um, I mean, yeah, triple suited probably hurts this way too much. I mean, the connectivity around the 10 is nice, but we looked at similar hand in the matrix, didn't we? Say it's a fold. Yeah. Ace 1094? Here, the question... Well, actually, the question might be if it's sometimes a limp and also if you call a raise. So let me know. Do you think it's a raise call, raised fold, or maybe a limp call? Gloroman folding the ace 1094, interesting. Maybe I'll open my re-fold game. I don't know. I think for me personally, the 109 combo would just be a little bit too enticing. Let's play Pokare, chiming in with the race call. I'm leaning towards the race call myself. Oh, pot call, yeah, I mislabeled the button here, but same story, pot call, Kikazi says. The race call, Punja says pot. I'm going with pot myself. And that's okay. It could be a mixed strategy, but whatever, man. 91%, fuck does 9%? Just ignore that. And it's what I'm gonna do. Ace 1094, let's see. And would be a raised fold up to the 95. Similar to different, uh, similar, yeah, similar-ish hands we looked up earlier, where if you have like a 109 and a 98 combo, the gap between the 9 and the lowest card, or the two lowest cards shouldn't be, you know, huge. It costs way the hand so much. It's one takeaway from my earliest study sessions, that the solver loves Jack 10 combos and 109 combos. If you have a suited ace in there, I don't think there's any of these that you fold. What's going on today? Rositan, dropping a sub as well. Thank you very much, sir. If indeed it is, sir. If that's not the case, then thank you very much, man. Cheers. What the hell? That's very kind. All right, two last hands. And... Interesting one. Two folds? Now that surprises me. Not saying, you know, I haven't studied Smartline stuff at all, just instinctively I would raise, personally. And double connected, yeah? Like the extra thought there? Bad gaps, low cards, would be Unlocker's, um... Reasoning? Makes sense? Those weird cards and gaps. Let's see. I'm gonna go with the pot personally. Unlocker has it. Nicely done, sir. Wow. Pot call because Monk hits low cards. Okay. See you, sir. Yeah. Ah, no, I don't really worry. Not part of that crowd, but I do think it's polite to mention it every once in a while. Um... What was it? 9643? Double suited. Solver agrees. Check out one pip stronger, like the 97, see what's the deal then, the 9765. But still, that's the only one, not even the 9764 or 54 I thought would have, uh, would be played for sure. Nope. Interesting. Debor is in the house as well. You need a lot more connectivity here. 9674, let's check up on that. Oh, not check up on that, but see what the solver says. In, you know, assuming PLO50 rig here, star zoom rig, the matrix wouldn't advise to call that one or play that one. Unlocker says I would open this. Yeah, I would too, personally. Let's see if... I agree with you, Unlocker. Let's see if the thingy agrees. Wait for a moment. Oh, I thought this is button. Yeah, okay, fair enough. Debor is. Yeah, then you're right. It wouldn't make the cut, apparently. OMGFG, welcome back to the channel, sir. Good to see you in the study stream. Parted, parted mix. Let's play Pokare, is this mixed limp pot, maybe? Maybe, yeah. Could be. We've seen similar spots that were indeed a mixed strategy. And you're right, and it's not one of those, you know, 90/10 spots. Here it's actually 20% of the time a limp. Nicely done. Let's play Pokare. I'm gonna set fold to 10973, yeah. Okay, do we have one more? No. So I was thinking, let's check out what we do if we get raised from the blind, and then later on, switch it around and check out the big blind's perspective for the US think. And I fixed it. In the meantime, while I wait for some answers, I fixed the display issue. The only thing that gets dotted out here is the queen, and has to do with my scaling settings in Windows. So if you don't use scaling in Windows, if you never heard of it, then you're not using it. Um, then you won't have this issue, and I could easily fix it. I just turned the scaling to a level where only the queens get dotted out, so note that you know, the two dots here is obviously queen. Gloroman says sure. Sounds good to me. So how do we do this? Let's see. Small blind, then big blind raises, and it's back to us in the small blind, right? And Rositan, now you can see how you set this up. For a lot of spots, we need initial ranges, but here, I believe we don't. So we just add three ranges here, and now it comes to the part where you can download stuff from the Mastermind Cloud. Here, some stuff that either came with the program or that I downloaded already. Everything is in frame, yeah. So... And that's what I did earlier to get the ranges for the small blind opening and, uh... Yeah, the small blind opening. And now the spot. So we select the rig here basically, and the stack size. Great out stuff will be added soon. And post-flop stuff as well. So everybody, let's set up the spot. It was a raise first in the small blind. We re-raise. And now the big blind raises us, and it jumps back to us in the small blind, and now we download these ranges, and then we have have them here in a folder, and can add the single three ranges there. So that would be raised first in, small blind versus big blind rebet. Just give it a name, 'cause... How much was big blind raise? I'll tell you in a moment. Let me set this up, and then I'll tell you, 'cause I saved the situation. So we downloaded this, right? I believe we did. Wait, is it crashing on us? No, no, no. For the record, I haven't had a single crash yet. So, right. Actually, you can check this out right now. It was raised first in small blind. That was the stuff we had set up. And the pudding range is 38% there, 4% limp, so very, very few limps. And we had some limps at the beginning. Other than that, we had a lot of mixed strategy limps, right? Okay. Okay, so now we add three ranges. Here's how it works. We downloaded them already. It was this one, right? So we make sure, yep. First would be that we can fold. My pleasure, Gloroman. Thanks for being here, mate. Have a good dinner, too. So, that's the folding range. And we'll name it too. Naming them here is important, because that's what the, that will be the names of the three buttons we had while training. So, we only fold 14%. It's interesting. Then we small blind call. And then we have four bet. Or in this case, you know, just raise. And it's not the initial raise, it is the small blind raise pot again. Raising 13% roughly versus small blind raise. Alright. Yeah, so, yeah, sounds reasonable. And here we might, because now that's not adding up to 100%, we might need to... Oh yeah, now we need to add villain ranges here. Hang on, we'll do that in a moment. Okay. We didn't need to do that earlier, because the villain hadn't acted yet. It was just a simple small blind open spot, raise first in spot. Okay, so our initial range. We have that one downloaded already. That was in the small blind spot, and we raise pot, right? Or is it something else? Double-check something? Yeah, I think these are the same ranges, but we're gonna go with the raise first in. No, actually not, those are not the same. Raise small blind, yeah, okay, these should be the same. Let me make sure, so just to, for me, for myself, to avoid future confusion. If these are the same ranges, so now it's 37.7? If we go with... Oh, but they won't be the same ranges, because that's PLO500, okay, cool. So it's small blind raise pot, right? Gotta catch up with the chat in a second, I just wanna finish setting this up. So the villain range now would be him three betting us, so that would you might need to download that one. Yeah. Okay, hang on, go to PLO50. Again, we're in the small blind, we raise, and this is the range we want, right? The big blind now raising. So... Should be the one. Looks like Hunter's just, uh, a visa day. Yeah, keep in mind, this is, I don't know if it's like a beta release, but the software has been out for a week. They are right now working on implementing functionality. I'm sure they'll make it, they'll hip it up later on, they'll make it a little bit nicer to look at later on. Da-da-da-da-da-da-da. So there was this one. And the big blind raising pot. Let me catch up with the chat in a moment. I think we have the wrong range here. This one should be correct now. But here, this might just be 100% range. Uh, you don't need to pay additional money. If you're a member of the Mastermind already. Don't need villain range. Looks really poor for this. I don't agree. Looks aren't everything. If they were, I wouldn't have a webcam on Twitch. Functionality is what matters, and in a couple of days, we'll be able to do post-flop stuff. First thing, it looks correct. It should be, right? Oh, you know what? Yeah, it is. Never mind. It does look correct. I was confused. This does look like it's adding up to 100. Okay, cool. So, alright, let me save this one. Small blind versus BB3bet. And also change it in the description, the overlay. And we raise 15, yeah. I know, right? But yeah, again, a visa day, it's not a, the software's not a looker right now, that I agree with. Okay, do you guys want any buckets here? Or should we just go look at our uncapped range? Well, it's not uncapped, but like a full range we show up with in the spot. Yeah, let me know. I'm gonna click the those, uh, the same buckets. Unfortunately, we cannot save the buckets right now. Okay, then maybe go with, like, slightly weaker stuff. Double-suited Broadway pairs. Check those out in the matrix real quick. Check out the best one, like those who did kings. Okay, so there are some raises in here that might, I personally am interested in those. Punja says no buckets, it's alright. Yeah, I'm leaning towards that as well, matter of fact. Yeah, because there's, yeah, I don't think we need buckets, because there's already a filter in here. In the sense that we only open 38% of the hands, so we might as well don't choose any buckets, yeah. Yeah, about 12% is no range. Is that correct? I'm absolutely rubbish when it comes to calculating, not calculating percentages that I can do, but like adding percentages and subtracting, multiplying percentages with each other. It was my bane in school as well. Again, the handset dotted out here is a display issue on my end. I could easily fix it, and it's only the queens. But it doesn't matter for our purposes. Also, welcome back, Kipari. I'm not sure if I just said that. Alright, here we go. Jack 9 at 7. Unlocker says call. For the record, I agree. I mean, I could probably, for you guys on mobile... Okay, but on top means just call. The rich one says, I don't know, is this better for you? Let me just, um... Wait this over. Hmm. Let me know if you have any problems having, keeping it in this view, because here, in the single table view, it'll get hard to drag the matrix over. Let me know. Could be some mixture with double-suited. Yeah, I think single-suited ones are pretty much always a call, right? Let's see. Uh, we don't have bucket selected, so yeah, it's not gonna show us right now. Okay. So a call 100%. Ace at 5, interesting one. Um, we can check out some double-suited ones, or check out the same one double-suited, why not? From the previous spot. And according to the matrix, there you go, these chunk of them get raised-raised. With the double-suited Jack-10. Uh, Punja, it's not telling us the category right now. I assume this is a bug or something, not implemented yet. It's only telling us, excuse me, categories if we have active filters, if we selected some buckets. Well, we could filter them further into these buckets, but, um, we are only getting presented now with hands that would have been in this spot, that the solver would have showed up within this spot in any case, so a hand that opens in the first place. So all the hands we see right now are confirmed opens. I might as well double-check this sometimes. Just to make sure. Yeah, and that's the case here. Now I know the answer. And against the, I would go, I would have gone with the fold anyway. Suited to the ace, it's still a call. Ace queen 44. Oh, right, right. Now I understand your question a little bit better, seeing that it's a visa day, seeing that it is, uh, 40.5% here. I believe the initial open frequency from the small blind was, what do we see, 38.5%, so only these 38% of all the, all your initial range, your uncapped range, are gonna show up here. Let me see if that helped. So I'm gonna go with a call. Punja saying call as well. Yeah, give it another shot, a visa day. And that's 100% a call. Jack 9 and 8. Alright, right. Um, I don't think that's the case here. It still might be. So for training purposes, visions, if I'm hearing you correctly, visions mixes in some hands that, uh, quote-unquote "shouldn't have been in this spot" already, like that should have folded previously, or shouldn't have opened in this case. If that's what you're saying, then, um, that's not something this does, as far as I'm aware. Alright. Yeah. I mean, we can, um... Let me know if you guys, uh, think that's a little bit better. We can like filter down the EV to like weaker hands. That way we don't have to mess around with buckets. This spot is 10% bad and 90% bad. Okay, now I'm not following anymore. 90% check, uh, bet. Okay, now, okay, now you have to start again. In the meantime. Um... This, probably fold, I'd say. What do you guys think? Yeah, that didn't help. I understand, I know how it is when typing, happens to be often enough, but that just blew my mind there for a moment. So I'd say fold. And that's correct. As you can see by the EV, it's a slightly better move. And the EV is minus 3, because we are in the smart line, so half a big blind we have already invested, that's gone anyway. And we pot it, so putting in another three big blind. And if we fold, those are gone, so this EV is always gonna be constant. So anything that makes us profit with here would be minus 2.9, for example. Get confused when you say so many percentages. Yeah, I did too. Okay, well, there shouldn't be any surprises here. Right, 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 I understand. So if, does it mix in? Yeah, yeah, I see. As far as I know, it doesn't. There would be, I don't know, if you're on the Mastermind Discord, I believe you can, um... You can join the Discord, even if you're not a Mastermind member. That might be a good question to ask. Pot it, I'm playing PLO8. I think that's funny. I know very little about PLO8. But the ace do is a really strong hand there, right? Alright, we're waiting. Pretty easy here. Ace queen 4, triple-suited. But it's small blind versus big blind. Right, Unlocker, sure, yeah. You can just, like up here, where we set up the initial spots, the initial ranges, you can go with 100% ranges, and then use the buckets. The buckets are essentially filters. Good point, good point, yeah. So fold, the rich one says. Unlocker says fold. I'm folding the triple-suited a lot myself as well. Not, however, in the small blind. Let's, um... Dig into this just a tiny bit further. I'll just bring it up again. Calling is, uh, shows a 1BB profit. But let's check out a similar spot, so let's say we open the button with this hand. There's some raise raises here, actually, but down here, these would be triple-suited or not suited to the ace hands. Okay, from the button, that's still the case. Let's move up. To the cutoff. Even here, the ace 4 triple-suited is still a call. And note again, there's some funky mix going on here. It's not something that I think I should I need to remember, because, I don't know, Kipari, what do you say, is that would you ever raise raise? The triple-suited ace, queen, queen 5? Punja said, I said call. That's why you play the high stakes, man. Jumpman Kyle, thank you very much for following. Cheers. So that was for the cutoff. Move up even further. Rositan says probably not, yeah. So here, where it becomes insolvent again, a mixed strategy. With the ace 4, triple-suited, and the queen in there, uh, two queens in there. Alright. Ace king at 7. Low, okay. OMG, I added a thingy to the tier overlay here. The spot right now is small, we are in the small blind. Uh, we raise first in, the big blind 3 bets, and it's back to us. And now we are deciding what to do. And the underlying assumption is that it's PLO50 on stars with the zoom rake, so a high rake environment. Punja, am I confusing you with someone? Weren't you the high stakes player, the high stakes pro? Sorry, then I'm mixing up your name. I completely remembered that wrong. Call here, right? Yeah, I'd say so as well. 100% call. Jack 1076, slightly more interesting, I'd say. Anybody would find a fold here? Anybody would find a four bet? A bunch of cards. Yeah, no worries, OMFG. No worries. Yeah, Rossi Tan folding here. I think the, like, again, again, one takeaway from my earlier study sessions is suited jack ten, single suited jack ten, the solver loves that. So I'd be kinda surprised if it's a fold. That wouldn't be the first time, however. The folds have it. The single fold, Rossi Tan. Got it right here. Are there any non-aces' kings' hands that forbid that are not double suited? It's a good question. Forbid if double suited? Okay, let's check both of these things out. I wonder, Poonja, with the, with the gap, it is. I'd love that to be true. Then... Then it was another gentleman from India, with an Indian sounding name at least. I was totally spaced out on that. Right, so smart blind, and jack ten, what is it, nine? A jack ten, seven, six, double suited. Is that a raise race? Yes, down to the seven, six. Got a perfectly rate, right. Poonja's saying fold, how? Let's see. Well, the EV difference is miniscule. Call is slightly minus EV. I guess the gaps really don't help. Must be 40% for saying there must be hands. Um, yeah, let's, I kinda wanna do this at the end. At the end of checking out the spot, then we also visit net. Yeah, that's why I like it. I'll get back to that. I'll check out, once we are through with these 50 hands, maybe even do some more, depending what you guys want. And then I'll, we'll quiz the matrix and see if there are any hands that get four betted or not, double suited aces and kings. We'll find some errors today in this tool. Interesting, like bugs in the program or mistakes with the ranges. I tried to keep up with the pertinent Discord channel, but I might have, um... I missed that one. Poonja's saying, wasn't the same, was forbidding for repositionment through it from... Not single suited, no. The rich one! Cheers for being here, man, and thank you again for the sub. That was very kind. Give us all need a program, yeah. Someone agreeing with Kibbiri? Why? What did he say? Oh, solver's a putty. So how about here? Ace, jack, nine, three. Oh, now I get your question, Poonja. You're saying there was a hand that the solver would have folded earlier. Um, let me check. Would have folded to... Wouldn't have opened in the first place. I think that's what you're saying, right? We had an, the one that was folded was an ace, queen, seven, three, I believe, perfectly single suited to the ace. That one didn't get played at all in the smart blind. But let's, let's see. Okay, no, that's fine. That's fine to open, as confirmed by the matrix. And now I also seen the, seen the answer here. Fair enough. So the matrix is advocating a call. Let's check it out. And right, smart blind, raise first in, yeah, ace, jack, double suited. Interesting, let's take a look at the EV here. So we had some spots where the difference, let me take a screenshot of that one. Ask in the, might as well ask that in the, in the Discord. It might just be that, um, where the, when the EV difference is so small here, minus three and minus 3.2. Oh, no, actually, never mind, never mind. Forget what I was trying to say. What are you, do you, you guys have any ideas? That would explain the difference here between the matrix and the Mankor server ranges? Because the matrix is based on Mankor, right? Alright. Okay. Interesting stuff. Could be a call versus weak opponent sometimes. That might be it, yeah. And for me, nothing comes to mind that would, you know, handily explain this. Alright, moving on for now. I'll ask this in the Discord. Ace, king, ten, nine. Visa Day is saying, what happened? What happened was the previous hand, the ace, jack, nine, three is perfectly single suited to the ace. The bucket tool would tell us to, first of all, raise it first in, and then fold versus three bet, versus the matrix tells us to raise call. Unlockers is call, yeah. I guess here, it's just something to notice that this is not a raise race, not even against the maniac, I'd say. Can check eight, six. Kinda interesting if you wanna call it one. Don't block, we unblock an ace, I'd say. Um, the gaps between check eight, six are pretty horrible. It's car, but maybe close. Harder onto four bet. Oh, that's, Poonja, this one, four bet? Or the previous one with the ace, king, ten, eight? I think forbidding this one might be a pretty big mistake, but I'm happy to be proven wrong. Whereas, versus with the ace, king, ten, nine, it was actually that we just had. The, um, forbidding difference, like it wasn't horrible to four bet when you were able to see the expected value on there. So I'm gonna go with a call. Turns out it's a fold. And here, it's not even close. Again, let me double check in the matrix. Because it's a new tool, maybe there's some weird stuff going on, but I doubt it, because the underlying ranges are, should be sound. Yes, king, ten, eight, yeah. Or ten, nine in that case, but doesn't matter. Uh... Yeah, okay. Ten, I, yeah. I said it wrong, sorry. We added a confusion. And the matrix agrees here. Jackson nines. Ice splash rolls. The ranges are Mankor server ranges provided by the Mastermind. You can download pre-flop ranges from the, within the tool. Just click a button and you can download them and import them directly into the tool. And in a couple of days, we will be able to download post-flop stuff as well. Hope that answers your question. You can also, if you run your own Mankor sims, you can import your own ranges. Call here, right? Anybody would ever four bet? And would you four bet if it's double suited? So call here for sure, but double suited is a potentially a decent question. I'd say the jacks and tens. Seven and five, good to see you, mate. Welcome to the second ever No Delay Study Stream on the channel. Gonna be a regular thing from now on. Continuing next week, but for now, it's continuing today. Good to see you, mate. Alright, let's check it out for... So jacks and tens get raised, raised. Raise race called, I would assume. I don't know if you just, you probably just get it in right, once we were talking five bet here. Um, and with jacks and nines double suited, what does this one say? Which one is that? That would be this one, right? Call the raise. I'm confused. Oh, right, right, yeah, yeah. Raised in the first place and then called a raise. Okay, cool. But hang on, any of you guys use the matrix? What's the difference here? This, this... Because here, like with the jack, jack, ten, nine, double suited, right? We raise and call. Like this is just assuming we're in the smart blind, we raise first in. So we raise and then we call, we raise. And this one with the jack nine, slightly different color. I can't see that color down here in the, in the explanation, I think. Is it that one here? Oh, we call? Wait, so basically we limp? It's a limp raise? Matrix, the fan, good to see you, mate. What call means limp and call? Oh, this would be these here. This would be a limp and call. Yeah, this would be a limp raise then, no? What do you guys think? Limp strategy, orange and red? A mixed strategy? Eh, could be it, yeah. Because this, the jacks and nines, is that a limp raise? That sounds weird. That'd be on the other possible explanation. So I bet you're right, um, Kibbiri. Color is call, raise. Yeah, I'm a little bit colorblind, I have to admit. So you're saying this is color, this is this one here, right? Is it all in frame? Yeah. So basically limp raise? Am I hearing that right? It's an interesting one, Rossi Tan. Well, does it? Um, oh, I think there was a, like a mistype question mark, right? Um, I'll screenshot this one and ask. Server doesn't limp in PLO? Yeah, the fan puts it, put it, made a good comment there, saying there's a call-call, and that would be this one here, like the lightish yellow. Does the three betted versus button, I think so, why not? Yeah, versus button, you're three betted for sure, yeah. Like looking at the jacks and nines here. Okay, so I'll take a screenshot of that one as well and ask the matrix team. Unless one of you is like confident that you know what this color means, if this is a limp raise. Okay, noted. Don't limp for a smart, but it's smart stakes. Yeah. Well... Yeah, I mean, you're, you're speaking from a, like a practical perspective, right? How that works out in practice, where you certainly have, uh, I'd say the highest expertise of everyone in the channel right now. Just do note that the solver advises differently sometimes. We had some mixed strategy hands in the earlier spot. Alright, so very interesting and I'll, um... With splash money, yeah, okay, yeah, that's, that's a good, that's a good point, since we're playing a lot on Run and Run, the fan. With splash money is probably a different story. We can limp a little bit, uh... Increase our range a little bit and limp the weakest parts, I'd say. Or even limp the strongest. Some, eh, nah, I'll limp the strongest probably. Also ignore limbs, yeah. In practice, I tend to as well. To come, yeah, this, lord knows, there's plenty of shit to learn in PLO. Good to see you here, the fan. Often gets in splash to part, it does happen sometimes, but yeah, right, not terribly often. So here, king, queen, queen, jack, the question is call or four bet? Double suited. Don't block an ace. But for a non-ace containing Broadway paired hand, double suited, doesn't get much better than this. Rossi Tan goes with a four bet. I'm honestly not sure myself. Probably, right? What, how many, uh, what was the big blind three betting frequency? I think 14.7% the fan would call. I'm still torn. I'd say against a decent part of population, I'd four bet. Let's see. Yeah, right? Alright, so the EV difference isn't huge. Profit of calling makes a profit of 2.4 BB, this one makes a profit of 2.7. And now, it's, it's probably a good question. I'd be curious to hear your input here, Kibbiri. Poonja's saying four bet as well, yeah? Um, yeah, be interested to hear yours, uh, your thoughts, Kibbiri, and also everyone else's. So I would say it's a four bet here because the solver in GTO land, you assume fold equity, right? Which you probably have less of, especially in the micro stakes PLO. And I would say this is likely, or I imagine this would likely be the difference in EV wise here, the assumed fold equity. Rossi Tan again with the, yeah, that's confused me at first too. Don't forget, we, we are on the smart line, so we already invested half a big blind, and we parted initially. So we invested in total 3.5, but since the smart line is already, you know, gone, the default state here is that we're already down three big lines. Which is why we are making a profit, but it's showing minus 2, 0.3 here. Not so much, not so much what? Not so much four betting, you say? I'll put the next one up in the meantime. Yeah, this one should probably be pretty straightforward, right? Yeah, I stumbled upon, stumbled over that, uh, in the beginning as well. Yeah, call, right, folding, I think out of the question. And forbidding certainly is. Even against a maniac, this is just not a forbidding hand. I'd much rather have, go back to the ace, king, ten, nine we had earlier and maybe revise my earlier statement against some, like proper maniacs for 100 BB. Eh, maybe, sometimes. Especially if, if these are the kind of players, and there are some of, some of those that join your table and are only there for like one or two buy-ins, and you really need to try to play hands against them. Yeah. Queen, eight, seven, seven, um... Not uninteresting, I'm not sure I would, not sure I'm gonna answer correctly here. Queen 8-7-7, um, not uninteresting, I'm not sure I would, not sure I'm gonna answer correctly here. Personally, I'm sa- I'm saying it's a call. I mean, we don't block aces or kings. Rositan also leaning towards the fold, huh? Alright, I'm, I'm dying on this beach. Ah, the false habit. Okay, that's probable handout position, Kipperi. For Kipperi, it's clear cut. And let's dial this one into the matrix, or at least similar hands. Call my raise first in, single suited aces, which ones? Are almost the same, let's see. Yeah, you're right. Was it A? No, Queen 8. Oh, it's not eights, it's sevens, my bad. Matrix agrees, and there you can see the hands that raise call, basically all the perfectly single suited aces, and if it's triple suited or not suited to the ace, the one with the Ace-King gets raised called. And some that have decent connectivity around the sevens. 10-9, Jack-10 combo is really strong. It's perfectly single suited, like this is, in case you're not familiar with the matrix, everything above this dividing line here, this diagonal uh, on top here is perfectly single suited, down here is either triple suited or not perfectly single suited, like suited to two low cards. Just wanted to show that, also see it myself. Ace-triple-kings, do we still call? Or do we fold? Do we four bet? Which is fold? Yeah, I'm gonna say fold here as well. The fan would call? Four bet would be interesting. Well, you block kings! Kipperi says raise, just no, no fear there, huh? Okay, now we have all three options on the menu, huh? You know what, small line versus big line, I'm gonna go with the call. What the fuck? Okay, Kipperi showing why he is coaching micro stakes. Very nicely done, sir. Okay, check out, like, one pip weaker, what's the deal with trip queens? Do they get called, or do they just get folded right away? Perfectly single suited. They get raised folded, and this is where it gets funky, and it's something I I have not made up my mind about yet. Where down here, for like a Queen-Queen single suited in this case, uh, beyond the diagonal line here, either triple suited or not suited to the ace, has raised raises in there. And why these are not just raised folds? It, again, it has to, has to, have to do with fold equity. But I still can't wrap my hand, uh, uh, can't wrap my hand around it either, but certainly not my head. Punja also said, you also said four bet, good point. Well done. Queen 8-7-5, any of you would four bet this? I mean, I'd say, well... Kipperi is. Ron Polin, hey. I have to take percentages, Kipperi, if I keep giving you these shout-outs. Now, he's a, he's an awesome dude, and he's been, um, posting content for pokerstrategy.com for 10 years now, and he's super affordable. Rositan says call, um, I would assume no takers for four bet, no takers for fold here. Like folding seems out of the question. Dammit, I do have to take percentages, Kipperi. Now do, uh, do contact him, he also does, uh, study, uh, like group, uh, coaching visits, which is really cheap. I'd like to, but not against GTO, yeah. Um, yeah, that's a good point, but I think still, but, but then, call. Yep. King-Fing-Jack, um... Well, I'm thinking it should be straightforward, but maybe I'm wrong, I've been wrong a bunch of times today. Think it's pretty straightforward, right? Should be 100% call, yeah. It's a fairly profitable one, too. Is King-Queen-Jack single suited? And maybe interesting? I mean, it's not a fold, right? That much is a given. Yeah, I'm saying a call as well, and, but I wouldn't be shocked if it tells us to, uh, four bet it sometimes. Shanghai Poker saying, uh, four, Rositan saying sometimes four. Again, might be a spot against these, like, two-buy-in threshold maniacs. Maybe a four bet? Saying call. Yeah. So the four bet is still profitable. But the call is more, is, uh, more profitable. I guess you can, uh, like, if you four bet, you can't build a huge pot at this point. If you get raised again, you're never folding. You have to shove a lot of, a lot of flops, whereas if you call, you're still a fold equity if you can check raise. Maybe it's just part of the reasoning why calling is better? Because you always, you, you're gonna check a lot of, especially in the three-bet part. I'd say you've gotta check a lot of, if not all, Broadway boards to the, to the razor. And he's gonna be heavily inclined to, uh, c-bet with a decent amount of flubs in there. Let me know if that's stupid reasoning. But I like to, like, make sense of things for, for me personally, even if the reasoning might be wrong. Still have to remember stuff. Is Queen 5-3, uh, pretty weak? The three, uh, wheel cards, and a suited ace and a queen, unblock kings. Rositan, you know, that's what I'm waiting for. The postlop sims and the ability for the tool to hook into the Twitch chat to record your votes. I assume it will work similar to how it works for PLO visions. I was blown away when I read in the Discord, that's apparently coming this week, this functionality. Just saying fold. Yeah, I'd be leaning towards the fold myself as well. And call it with the Ace-King, maybe? Interesting. So it is a profitable call. 0.3 BB profit, so it is... It's not a lot, it's not a decisive winning hand there. Queen 5-3. Server would do the same? Eh, does, server them in the matrix, and how about the Ace-King? Well, if that's a call, then that's a call as well, never mind. Interesting stuff. Best to receive one, played it out of position, and that's a good question to ask, yeah. Matrix, no, I don't think it would, unless I checked something wrong here. We do see, I'm, uh, again, assuming, uh, PLO 50 rake, but higher, uh, lower rake, just open up ranges, right? So from what I see here, the Ace-Queen, Queen single suited, yep, or when raised first in, yep. Would be a raise call. No, no, no worries, always good to double-check stuff. Jack-10-6-5. I gotta thank, any takers for a four bet, any takers for a fold? Oh, interesting question. Are the gaps too large to, uh, to continue here? Smitty, what's up indeed, welcome to the No Delay Study Stream. Gonna be a thing from now on. Good to see you, mate. Yeah, I'm going with easy call myself as well, but maybe the gaps are too large, maybe we'll be surprised. Okay, a 1% surprise in there. So what's 1% of surprise? It's like... That, even that's too long, it's like 8%. Alright. 10-9 and 8. Should be pretty straightforward, I'm not gonna wait too long with this one, I'd say. Just be a call. Yep, 100%. King-Fing-10-8, um... Don't see this being a fold. Nah, can't be a fold. Alright, so do let me know if you think that even in these spots where I think they're pretty straightforward, I should be waiting longer. It's the second time I'm doing this. King-Fing-9-2s, that? Okay, I got my answer locked in. Fan, come, nah. Come in with the omlads, Rositan saying call. Yeah, I think, so four bet out of the question, and double suited, we're not folding this, I would think. We might as well put this one into the matrix, see if there are any double suited queens that gets folded. Uh, so the 8-3, 7-3, and 7-2s, you know what? Again, there's so much shit to learn in PLO, like, if you wanna remember, like, fold to 7-3, then maybe, or the 7, eh, the 7-2s, and then maybe the 7-3, fine, otherwise calling this one then is not gonna be a huge, huge deal EV wise, I, I would assume. Smitty, right, uh, you couldn't see right now, cause I had a matrix open, I added an overlay here, and it's small line raised first in, although Kipperi just answered, but I for complete mistake. Uh, big blind three bets and the underlying assumptions, PLO 50 stars zoom rake. Small line versus three bet is correct, yes, small line raised first in. Versus three bet. It's Jack-9-8. Shouldn't be surprises here. So should just be a call, right? And 8-7-7? I mean, the difference between not being ideally single suited and being suited to the 8, not a huge deal, I'd say. Any reason to fold this with perfect connectivity? I'd say no. It's a little bit different than the Queen-8-7-7 we had earlier. Yeah, 100% call. That's one where I'm always, where, where I find myself looking it up a lot after the fact. It's not something I memorized yet, this, this one. I memorized one thing about it. Pretty certain it's not a four bet. Punja folding. I think, I believe I did both in the past, Punja, for what it's worth. Ice, I'm gonna give you a second longer. Yeah, they are. I'm going with the call here as well. When I remember, when I looked these up, like, something like the King-King-8-2s is possibly a fold, and weaker is certainly a fold, I'd say. But I seem to remember, now that I say it out loud, that, uh, kings with a queen, kings with a jack, even, or 10 are all calls, we'll check up on that in a moment. Yeah. And let's see where the cutoff lie, where, where's the cutoff here? So again, let's just look at the ideally single suited ones here. Like triple kings get folded, okay, unless it's the Ace-King, that one we had earlier, is a raise-raise. So, King-King-9, and then large gaps between the 9 and the other card. And even King-King-10, like two Broadway cards, just makes it always, no matter what the, the fourth card is. All of them are raised calls. Versus 10% big blind three bet, I believe we saw, we, we did, uh, uh, this the spot leading up to this, just small blind open earlier, and we saw the big blind, uh, three bets at, I believe, 14.7%, possibly 14.5%. So yeah, that, that's the matrix for this one, like, the, where the side cards, if they're not Broadway cards, need to be connected, even if it's just the four 2s. Which at runtime, I probably definitely would have folded, I think. But as soon as the gaps get sizable between the side cards, interestingly, the King-King-8-5 is still a fold, whereas the King-King-4-2s isn't. Interesting, I guess, hmm. Can figure out why. Can you, can we make more straights with the four 2s? We can make the wheel and the 3-5-6, right, so two straights with the 8-5, we could make the 6-4-3? And the 6-7-9, only two, two straights as well, but we have higher cards. Oh. I don't know, if you guys have any idea, let me know. How's the mic installed? Hey, I, this, now I can happily show you, even though my place is a mess, hang on. I'm here to learn. Best question in history. Hang on, let me, I'll need to grab the camera there. So I, um, bought a boom arm, is what they're called, they clamp onto a table. And you, and I, I bought a, strangely enough, I bought a really good one, I bought one from Rode. And so, you know, you, the, the microphone itself just screws in here, and you'll see a lot of streamers, uh, when there's an arm, a boom arm in the in the, in view, it will have these rounded off screws, and that's always the Rode arm, and, um, yeah, you clamp it. You clamp it to a table, I set it up to an extra table just to avoid, uh, you know, vibrations on this table to carry over into the microphone easily. And that's pretty much it. And then it goes into an audio interface, like, it's one of these, it's these XLR plugs, it's on USB microphone. You can, if you, you can also buy USB, but I wanted to go with a, like a proper one from the get-go. Yeah, and that's, that's it. If you ever buy a boom arm, be advised, do not open the package near your monitor. They're notorious, because usually they get delivered folded up, that they're notorious for destroying screens, because, you know, you cut up the you cut it open, so it can, and it just goes like, bang! And also, like, if I take off the mic now... And also, like, if I take off the mic now, it would just shoot up. Shanghai Poker saying in German, kennt das als Schreibtischlampe, is, uh, meaning I am familiar with that from desk lamps. That's exactly the same setup. This is just a very nice arm. And what I do like about it, which you would think would be a default for other arms, like, if I move it around, first of all, it moves really easy, but the microphone stays in the same orientation. Now, so that, that part I do like a lot. Okay, boomer. And you can, uh, you can definitely get away with a really cheap arm. Like, this one was like 75 euros, I think. You can buy one for 20 and be fine, but this microphone is really heavy. And so, and since I know that I'm moving a lot when I stream, so I'm gonna be moving the arm a lot, I wanted to have one that keeps the orientation of the microphone the same. Rossitan, thank you very much for saying that. I, I liked that you like it, cheers. I'd like to hire an au pair that keeps the mic, the mic, um... Ah, that'll leave her one arm free to still, you know, fan me some fresh air. Yeah, I'd be down. Now we have the ace queen 76. My, I would say the only question is if this is ever, if this is ever a four bet. Might be a question in someone's mind here. Probably never a fold, double suited. Yeah, personally, I would also say it's never a four bet. But again, I've been wrong. I think what we'll do is we'll go through the last 22 hands and then I'll take a break. And very likely have a nighty stream tonight. What? Ah, I should have waited longer. Huh. Check it out. Kipri saying, "Yeah, I should have waited." I thought this one was a clear cut spot. Check it out. Actually, pretty extensive. EV for call is better? No, it's not. Smitty, um, don't get confused. We are already down minus 3 BB, because we already parted. So these 3 BB are already gone. And meaning if you see minus 1.9 here, means we make 1.1% big blind profit. And the four bet is even better than that. Oh, versus fold, yeah, yeah. But let's check it out, uh, check this out. This is an interesting matrix for the 8 double suited ace queen here. Because it's not just a few hands that get raised raised. Even a few of the weaker ones, like triple, like, not ideally double suited, like ace queen of hearts and 85 of spades is still a raise. Personally, I would maybe ignore some of that part. Not that I pretend I could memorize all of that. Um, but this one I find interesting, and I think it's a combination of, or not, on not blocking kings is pretty huge here. We block an ace. But that does, the 76 surprises me. Something like the, uh, ace queen 109, 98, 107, even 106, sure, yeah. I get that. But the 76 is surprising to me, um... For shits and giggles, let's check out the ace king and see if that changes anything when we're blocking kings as well. Do we have fury raises here? No, actually, now it goes down to the 75 and 65. I mean, it's a little bit different, like, the 86 doesn't get raised anymore, uh, like, the not ideally single suited, but whatever. Hang on, I'm curious about this one. That's again the ace queen here. Okay. Interesting, very interesting. King queen 98? Should hopefully be a little bit more straightforward. I mean, was wrong at least two times when I said that in this spot. Yeah, should just be a call, right? Yeah, 100%. 8 at 75? If that one would be a decent question to ask for the big blind, uh, for the button and the cutoff. We'll do that in a moment. Just check up on that in the matrix. With the one gap, I, I, I would say small blind versus big blind, this is a call 100% of the time. Yeah, but let's dive into similar spot with the same hand. What was it, 8875? Check it out for the cutoff. Ah, he's, I kind of had an inkling that it might be worth checking out. In the cutoff, we want perfect connectivity between the side cards. Or, yeah, it's even fine if there's a gap. Smitty, um, check back next week. Um, this is gonna be all post-flop going forward for a, for a decent time. So first of all, I'm planning on doing the study streams a lot from now on. It might be every day, might be five days a week, I don't know. And as soon as we can do post-flop stuff easily, as soon as that gets implemented, those ranges, uh, are downloadable next week or this week, um, we're gonna do that. So that's for the, um, cutoff here. And I'd say on the button, this, with this, this very same hand would then be a raise call, probably. Yeah. Again, don't go too crazy here, is what the, uh, the matrix is saying. The 5 is where it stops, the 75. Cool stuff. I'm, I'll wait for this one. Give you a chance to chime in. Fold call or four bet? Alright, no takers, I'm gonna say, uh, call. Oh, I would have bet some money on this man. Shanghai Poker? Right on the money there. Jack 986. So one thing to note, uh, the EV difference is minuscule. And I wouldn't be shocked if the matrix tells us to, uh, raise call this. We've had this happening a few times today. And it was always in spots where the EV difference was absolutely tiny. There's a check 9, right? Check 9, 86. Oh, that's double suited, don't be shocked, that was double suited, okay. Phew, I was shocked. Matrix agrees in this case. I... I side with the fans' wow there. Ace queen 4 deuce, pretty similar to... You're right, it doesn't even get opened. Good point. Completely ignored that fact. Um, should, there should be no surprises here, right? Oh, maybe I'm wrong. Kansas four bet. I believe, yeah, I believe they don't, Kipri. Uh, the, as far as, uh, to the best of my knowledge, the matrix uses PLO 50 zoom rake as well from stars. Opposite of settings, yeah, that might be it. There's one spot I'll ask about that we had earlier, that I'll ask about that in the Mastermind Discord. I was curious why there was a difference or calculation settings here, might be. So, uh, the fans' four bet here, very aggressive. Personally, I'm gonna go with the call. But at this point, you know, I'm not gonna be shocked. Okay. It's still more profitable than, it's still profitable to four bet, this one. And it's not like, you know, a huge gap here in EV. King king 95, triple suited, interesting potentially? So we have connectivity between the king and the 9, and the 95. And it's small blind versus big blind. So I would say on, on the button, this would be a fold. Like a raise fold. How about here in the small one? What do you guys think? Do we get the call, or do we get the fold? Kipri saying, "Raise that motherfucker." Not blocking an ace, really? I'm gonna side with the calling, uh, the voice is calling for a call here. And this one is mixed, very much so. Thing, um, let me just see what the button spot is. 95, yeah. They actually picked, picked one of the four, you know, ignoring the triple kings, that actually gets raised folded. Not even the king king 7 deuce gets raised for, whatever. I'm not even gonna attempt to figure out a reason for that. But there you have it. Ace queen for 3, very similar to my hand we had earlier. Server doesn't have a sense of humor. Identical memory? Yeah, that's it. That must be it. So I'd say call, right? We had some... Um... The mid-check at the end of stream, they, for PLO 500, they're already off 150 big blinds, and I don't know what the last one was. It was either 200 or 250. But either one of those, they will offer for all, um, stakes, yes. So I'm gonna go with the call here, 100%. No shocker there. King 9, uh, king jack 98, completely offsuit, heads up, out of position. Any takers for a call? You mean flop tech, uh, post-flop sims? Yeah, for the... What do you, what do you mean for the 250? Uh, you mean for 250 big blinds, right? Post-flop sims, yeah. As far as I understand, um, everything that they, all the solvers, all the solutions they solved in, for the Mastermind, they have in the cloud, and this program's already hooked up to the cloud, but not fully yet. Once it will be fully hooked up, we will get to download all of them. Presumably is that always. Yeah, my default is to fold the offsuit ones as well. But I like the additional reasoning there. Just, I figured I'd hesitate here for a moment, seeing that we do have some decent connectivity. Yeah. Jack 995? Um, sort of similar to the, no, not really, to the queen 887 we had earlier. Here we have a jack 9 combo, which isn't nothing. The 95 helps a little bit as well. Curious. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna go with what Kipri said earlier, and I have my answer locked in. I'm curious if I hear different opinions. Hand saying fold as well. For about the queen 887, he said it's, uh, trash, trash hand out of position. Let's wait for Karas' fold, alright. See where, where that gets us. And that is exactly correct. He's the fucker. No, that wasn't the one. Also, interesting, weren't we surprised by a similar hand earlier? I started to notice, maybe like 2 hours for a study session is a good, uh, amount of time. Until then, I was able to recall most, if not everything, we did. That's tiding in study. Opened everything. So should we fold here, I guess, is the question. Personally, I'm gonna go with call. The meme about the Angry German kit, kit? No, I know the, I know. Don't think I do. Call, yeah, 99%. Now, this is a hand I... But I'm not gonna say anything. Karas' fold. For the record, up until now, and still, I would, uh, fold it. The reason why I started to speak is that I've seen a very similar hand on a JNANAS stream earlier, where, in, in this exact, exact spot too, small blind versus big blind, where he raised called. Might have been even the same hand. So based on that, that I've seen him do it, I mean, that's not much to go on, but still. I'm gonna go with call. But the folds have it. So it's like, it's just like with the... Completely rainbow hands. Really exploitive, uh, play of the call. Yeah, and high, uh, low rake environment. Oh, that one, yeah, that one. I didn't know you were digging that deep. The really old meme. Which is, uh, by the way, has been staged, in case you haven't, you, you haven't heard that. Rachel's call based best of 10 time, yeah, that's probably a good point. Oh, probably the, the reason, I mean. S1076? Have 11 hands left to go, I'll try to hurry up a little bit. Should just be a call, should be no surprises here. Decent connectivity, is 10, 1076 connected to each other, ace high suit. Yep. Never four bet, never fold. Jack 985? Based on what we've seen? Not gonna wait too long here as well, but I, I'd say what we've seen earlier. Calling it a fold now. Yeah, 100%. Going for confusing everybody, going for D. King queen jack 3? Should be in along the same lines as the hand we had earlier, right? With the, uh, kings and the Broadway card? So based on that, I would say call. Yeah. Um, might pull up the matrix for that, again, to see where the threshold is for queens. Kara on fire today, huh? What was I asked? Jack, jack, uh, queen, queen, jack, 3, okay. So again, all the Broadway cards get called, except for the jack 7. Personally, I, you know, if there's one in the middle here, I just go fuck that and ignore it. Especially if the jack 6 is fine. So whatever, just personally ignoring those. And again, the side cards with the queens, a little more selection here going on. I think with the kings, we, uh, went down a little bit further. For the raise calls, oh. Jack 108 deuce, interesting kind of with the, with the dangler. Jack 10 always valued by the solver, and always valuable in reality too. Does the one gap and the dangler in combination change enough to make this a fold? I'm gonna wait on this one. Give you a moment. Where's this call? Yeah. I'd, I'd say call as well. 95%. Any double suited hands that are folded? Um, let's check out if there any double suited jack tens that are folded. Otherwise, that's too big of a question. I'd say. Yeah, the, the ones that don't get played. Check ten seven three, ten four three, three deuce, like the... Huge gap between the ten and the next lowest card, and then a... Deuce or a three in there. Queen ten nine seven. I would assume no surprises here. I'm gonna just say call, not drag this one out, yep. Ace king eight seven, um, what was the other one that we have? Was the ace, uh, jack ten? Five, uh, what group is to the right, uh, or monotone, I guess. Um... They waited jack ten, which is kind of neat. And still made it a fold, and we had the ace five when dishes straight. However, here we block kings. Which make up a decent part of, uh, the big blinds three betting range. So any takers for a call? I'm gonna go, um, with fold as well, yeah. Cool. Ace six six four should be straightforward as well, from what we've seen. Pokare, Pokare, let's play Pokare, you're really on fire today, good job. Always a call. King eight eight seven. Hmm. Again, not blocking, so... Do we have any surprises there? Yeah, now, now I'm starting to notice that the session is... Uh, getting too long for me to remember every, everything. Awesome, uh, let's play Pokare. Thank you very much for saying that, that means a lot. Thank you. Cheers, guys. Thanks, the fan. Um... I'd say a fold, right? Not 100%, kind of interesting. Smitty, I hope so, I hope so. I, I, I would assume they're helpful for you, and... Um, I think you're right, yeah. If talking about every spot a little bit, help, I, I believe will help me memorize stuff. So I dig it too. Oh, interesting, no. Not always a fold. Cool. Okay. Yeah, I bet you are. If you're in the mastermind anyway, then you definitely should, Smitty. This is a great way to learn, and it's, for me, I'd like, the, using the matrix to get an overview over like, do I play the ace queen jack, do I play the ace jack five in the spot? Perfect. But for actually learning stuff, like that, that's neat for getting an overview, but for actually learning stuff, I prefer the, uh, quizzing format here way more. Raised at MF. Yeah, I think, I think so too, right? 100%, 100%, making us a whole 3.1 big blinds at the long run, which is nothing to sneeze at. Jack nine eight four. Probably unexciting, it's, I would assume it's never a fold, and I would assume it's a bit too weak for a four bet. So it needs to be a jack nine eight. Maybe down to the six? No value in the next three more home game. Deboris saying fold? Is the, does the dangler hurt it that much? Oh, okay, yeah, I'm, man, my emot game is horrible. Yeah. Well, I have absolutely no follow-up comment for this one. Do range research for that. Oh, that would be interesting if you want to share the... Results with us, Smitty. Looking to rake trap PLO 50, yeah. Um, check out the matrix. So there is this, you know, it's more than a tiny difference here in EV. EV is overrated, that'd make a good t-shirt. Trademark. I came up with it. Right, um, small blind rest person, jack nine eight. What doeseth, doeseth, the matrix say. Alright, matrix agrees. There you have it. Needs to be a little bit of a tighter grouping, grouping there. Grouping, oh god. I can't even talk anymore. Good thing there's only one hand left. Do you, um, yeah, I thought about it in the beginning of the stream, but then I figured for today I'll do PLO 50 again. It's not an imperative to advise by any means, Deboris, for next time, we'll do, uh, PLO 500. The reason why I didn't do it today was that I, I guess some viewers play on stars and stuff, and really don't get much rake back. Anke Schnitzel, welcome mate. Good to have you. This is some stuff. Yeah, we are, uh, getting quizzed about hands. You're just catching the very tail end of the stream, there's no tool from the mastermind. And you can set it up, you can set up any scenario you'd like, and then it selects 50 hands, or however many you like. And it quizzes you. So now we go to the next hand, and it asks us, we're in the smart blind. Uh, nobody, everybody folded to us, is the situation. We raised as the first one in, big blind three bets us, and now it gets back to us, and these are the cards we've been dealt. And we can decide between folding, calling, and four betting. Yeah, as in re-raising. Yeah, the next, uh, study session, Deboris start next week, is gonna be PLO 500 then. Anke Schnitzel says re-race. Uh, probably a bit too thin, with the dangler, the deuce doesn't help us at all. We don't block an ace. No, I haven't, I haven't read, I read two and a half poker books in my life. One of them was Full Limit Hold'em. And one is stories by Royal Brunson, and, or the one about the tournament from... Uh, the, the Dane, the Great Dane. I read that one too. Never read a PLO, but, yeah, a book, call. I think it's what we, as, as long as we have two Broadway cards here, it's not a fold yet, it's a call. Okay, and with that, I believe we have all the hands. Yeah, and I'm gonna call it in a, a, a stream here. I noted, Smitty, um, if I get around to it, I'll check it out. Yeah, call at the end, and I, I, I'm starting to realize, like, two, maybe two and a half hours max for a study stream is fine. Either that, or if you want to do longer ones, or if I want to do longer ones, I have to take a five or 10 minute break in between. Um... Right, so, so much for, uh, for that for now. Couple of things to note, I'm, in my schedule, it says that I will be, I will be streaming tonight. I only got four hours of sleep last night, so I'm not entirely sure... Um, how tonight's gonna go. That being said, provided I get enough sleep, uh, tomorrow, I'll be back tomorrow evening, as the schedule says, maybe a little bit later, in which case I'll adjust the schedule. But it should be not, actually, I should be fine. Uh, no afternoon stream tomorrow, and for the rest of the week, I'll be gone, uh, celebrating an anniversary on, uh, Thursday in my family. And have the LAN party on the weekend, so I won't be here for the weekend, and knowing me and the LAN party, it's not unlikely that I need to, at least a Monday off to recover. So, I'll be back next week, and I'll be, well, back tomorrow and possibly, probably tonight, but with the study sessions back next week at some point, and they will, I think, right now, I'm aiming to do them daily, in the afternoon. And just saying longer ones with break, it's alright, yeah, I'll, I'll try that. Should practice the wrong ones after you're done with 50 hands, there's a restart wrong button. That's what that one is for, I was wondering! Very much noted, Deboris, thank you. I started button once, was like, what the fuck is that for? And ignored it ever since. Thank you, awesome. You heard it here first, that's what we're gonna do next time. Let's do one for shits and giggles, see what happens. Oh, that's what it does. It doesn't give us like hands that shouldn't be in the spot. That's what I just thought. Um, we can go over the ones we did wrong. Oh, we had a few wrong. Okay, 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 I see. Um... Alright, let's, uh, do them. So the, oh, yeah, I don't remember. I think it was... I don't remember. I think it was a call. Yeah, okay. Jack ten seven six, I do remember that. Do you guys? At least, oh god, I hope I do. Still a valuable, uh, tip, Deboris. I thought this button would do something else, but this is still alright. Can we see equity distribution? Maybe, but I don't quite know how. But yeah, this one was a fold, to our surprise. Smitty, it might do it if we select buckets, which we haven't for this, uh, setup here. Yeah, 'cause this button rate, this might be what this is for. Uh, we'll check it next time. It's okay, I don't even have the tool, but you know how it works, huh? Just saw, yeah, yeah. Ace jack nine three, um, what was the deal here? I know we were torn between folding and calling. Man, I'm torn, I don't, I don't remember, I think call, but I also think fold, I don't know anymore. I really have a feeling, I had a feeling that up until the two hour mark, I was able to recall most, if not everything. I'm just saying fold. Crusher saying, hey, this is Crusher, welcome back to the channel, mate. Well, okay, I'm gonna go with the folds. Yeah, you guys have it. So that's what was surprising about the hand. King jack eight six. I believe I remember that one, give you a moment. Yeah, nice to see you back. If you just tuned in, um... Just briefly recap, I won't be, uh, tomorrow's my last stream this week. Next week, I'll start like on Tuesday or Wednesday at the latest, and then we'll have the study streams... Pretty much five days a week, if you're interested in those. Crusher saying fold, yeah, I think that was the, the deal here, right? Right now, we are at the very end of the stream as Crusher, and we're just going through the hands that we had wrong earlier. 100% fold is entirely correct. Well, that one, I do remember, that one we talked about a bit. Was a fold, 100%. Here, I'm not gonna say anything. You and me both, Smitty. I see, I've, I think the point for tournaments is well made, that no limit is a better game for tournament, even though I don't enjoy no limit tournaments, but for cash games, nothing compares for me. He's saying four bet, I think. Crusher coming in cold and... Deboris saying the only his kinking combo folding. Yeah, I was surprised here as well. Turns out Kipperi had it right on the money. It is a 100% c-bet, he said. I believe your comment was, you just potted post flop every time and print money. Where's the ace queen five? Right, I think I do remember. I'll give you a moment though. Crusher saying fold. Wuncho saying fold, now you guys making me doubt myself. Only because I'm pretty sure it's not a four bit lower, let me double check it in the matrix, but I think we did back then as well. Yeah, matrix, matrix agrees. Can I see the position? You, uh, down here in the overlay, I have the spot described every time we, uh, like, all the hands are for the same spot, and it's, uh, obviously gonna be described here in the overlay, so small blind, raised first in means... That everybody folded to us in the small blind, we're the first one to, to open, and the big blind three bets us, and the underlying assumption, which is, you know, interesting if you play a lot of PLO, is that it's, uh... PLO stars, uh, PLO 50 rake on stars, essentially means high rake, we are in a high rake environment. Um, yeah, I believe this one was a call, which is, that's what tripped me up with the ace jack nine three. Yeah, which, which was also why I then swerved towards making this a fold. Ace queen seven six, I remember that, but I'll wait for you guys. Interesting, uh, Deboris, thank you for checking that. I was surprised by that one as well. By default, I... Fold a lot of the triple kings in most situations against most players, like the overwhelming part. Wuncho going with the call? This one I do remember. Janner, welcome back, mate. Good to have you. Oh, but maybe, uh, play Pokar, um, let's play Pokare. He's saying, yeah. There was an equally, uh, big, as big a surprise as the triple kings. This one was a four bet. Specifically, smart blind versus big blind. We can, let's, you know what, what we didn't do last time? Check it out for button. Same, it even looks the exact same, um, as it did for smart blind, that's double check. Almost, almost, I think in the... On the button, there was like one or two more hands here, but it might have just been exactly the same. Alright. Jack nine eight six, I remember that one as well, I'll give you a moment. For anybody just joining, we, uh, did two simulations today, or two trainings, 50 hands each, and we're now only going through ones that we had wrong in the second one. And then, I'm gonna, we're gonna raid somebody, and potentially, I'm gonna stream later tonight. But... If you wanna chime in here, would you fold, raise, or four bet? Again, situation, the smart blind, raised first in versus big blind, three bet. I'm just saying call? Yeah, I remember this one, I think I, I took some stuff away today. I'm gonna go with the fold. I, for the record, I had that wrong, uh, last, last time around. Do note, the expected difference in expected value is tiny, but still. And I do think it has decent playability post. But yeah. That one we just had, just towards the tail end, was a fold indeed. Yes, and then should be... That one, oh, I'm gonna... Wait for that one as well. Give you a second. F, C, or four? We fold call a four bet. Default call or four bet? Kipari just messing everything up again, putting a D in there. It's probably like, oh, I don't know, do know. That's fair for Kara. Alright, did you have any wrong today, Pokara? That was the one where Deboris said that uh in low rake environments, like assuming PLO 200, where the rake is percentage wise much lower. This is a call and I would have, that's why I had, I had it wrong here, I called as well. Oh, these what you do in tabletop games when you're losing, turn the table. Okay. Alright, alright, there we have it, and rage quit, okay? The more you know. So I'm gonna keep the outro uh short and sweet. Thanks for tuning in, if you wanna see more study streams, you don't need to do anything except tune, tune in again next week. Probably towards the middle of the week and, you know, I normally stream five days a week at least. And I'm looking towards making these study streams a daily thing in the afternoons. No, 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 don't shut up. I won't, so I get plenty of stuff around. Same bad times, same bad channel. There you have it, um, yeah, the rest you already know, um, gonna be taking the next days off, be back tomorrow. Tonight, I honestly don't know, I had way too little sleep last night and I don't know if I'm gonna be able to uh play decent poker tonight, we'll see. That's all I got. So possibly, if you want, I'll see you tonight, uh, I do a evening stream tomorrow, probably no afternoon stream though. And then next week. Let's see if we can raid. Make someone happy. Punja, I appreciate you saying that. Means something, man, thank you. Uh, for the record, I did too, that's the, I mean, that's the reason why I'm doing this, because I wanna learn stuff. You know what, let's make the Queen of Diamonds happy, we could raid like Komodo Dragon Jesus, Pi Face Poker. If you wanna check those guys out and be aware they are on. But the Queen of Diamonds, I appreciate her tenacity, she plays uh micro stakes, no limit. And I don't know, there's something about her that I, I would like to see her get more viewers. Well, let's do just that. She's gonna be happy for sure. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for tuning in. See you soon if you want. Cheers, have a good one. Oh, hang on, I, I, there's always like the 10 seconds, I, I do the last, I'm not used to the no delay streams yet. Click the raid button at the very end. Not before the delay takes over. Alright. That's it. See you soon, guys, cheers.